Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 2nd meeting of the Middle School Committee. Happy Groundhog's Day. My name is Carrie Roach. I am the current chair. I will start by taking roll call. Robin Briggs.
Here.
Steven Catalano.
President.
Mark Conroy.
Here.
Denise Gibbons.
Here.
Superintendent Bob Mulaney.
Yeah.
And we have a few guests with us tonight. We have our business manager, Terry Wigan, and we have the admin team. We have the principals of all three schools that have graciously agreed to join us. So thank you. So a few action items that we need to get through quickly. A consideration to approve the 11921 school committee meeting minutes. I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Briggs.
I make a motion to that we accept or approve the school committee meeting minutes from January 19th, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Perfect. We have a consideration to approve the MOU with food services. Terry, I assume this is you?
It is, and I would just briefly, you have it before you. I would just briefly say the Food Services Association has signed this MOU. They've approved it, and they were very appreciative of all the efforts that the committee made in agreeing to the proposal set forth within it.
I'll take a motion to approve.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Gibbons.
Good.
It was Robin.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Briggs.
I make a motion to approve the MOU with the food services as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a consideration to accept a donation from the Steve and Nancy Cassidy Family Foundation. Somebody want to review what that is?
Do you want me to speak to that, Madam Chair?
Sure. Thank you, Bob.
Steve and Nancy Cassidy, great benefactors of our schools. And they've done a lot in the past to help out with our gymnasium sound system. And so a couple of years ago, we were able to purchase a new tuner and different apparatus with their donation. And now we're looking at purchasing more speakers for our gymnasium. And it will be, it will be an incredible addition to our facility. Not just for, you know, athletic contests, but we have a lot of school and community events in our gymnasium. So we're very thankful for that generous donation from Steve and Nancy.
I will take a motion to accept.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
I would like to make a motion that the school committee agrees to accept the donation of $1,481.93 from the Steve and Nancy Cassidy Foundation for improvements to the sound system in the middle school, high school gym.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And I would just like to add that I cannot wait to get back into that gym and listen to Steve's playlist during basketball games with more speakers. So thank you.
He said the sound is pretty good when you have like eight people in the gym, but once you pack it, then we're going to need the new speakers.
Okay, we have a consideration to approve a senior project. So I have an email from a senior named Brian Nichols, and I'll read his email. He says, "My name is Brian Nichols. I'm a senior at Millis High School. For my senior project, I would like to build a new dugout for the baseball field. I'm working with my dad, Richard Nichols, on this project as well. So far, we have drawn plans or in the process of getting those stamped by an engineer. We have raised over $1,300 with a goal of $2,500. And with the approval of the school committee, we would be able to get the funds from the CPC to cover the rest of the project total, which is $10,000." And just for everyone out there, the CPC stands for Community Preservation Committee. So, thank you, Brian. This is a great senior project, and I'm sure that the baseball team thanks you as well. So I will take a consideration to approve Brian's senior project.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Catalano.
I make a motion to authorize Brian Nichols to wreak or construct a dugout, a baseball, on the baseball field as part of his senior project, and he needs, as stated, he needs permission from us prior to getting CPC funding for this project.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Gibbons.
I did just want to make one clarification or just maybe a reminder for the general public. There are no funds coming from the school to, in support of this senior project. It is mentioned and required in order for the Community Preservation Committee to allocate their funds that Mr. Nichols get approval from the school committee because the project is on school committee grounds.
Thank you.
Thanks, Denise.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move to the superintendent's report. So Bob, do you want to start with a general COVID update?
Sure. Right now, in the district, we have three positive cases in the district schools. And I'll be sending a letter out to the community after our meeting tonight. We had a case that we just found out about, but all the close contacts of that case have been notified. So we're all set there. We have six staff members who are out as close contacts. Some of those are close contacts working with individual kids. Some of those are close contacts to outside of school situation, their families, et cetera. And right now, we have eight students in the district quarantining as close contacts.
Thanks, Bob. And before I, before I continue, I just realized that I neglected to mention, if anyone has a question about the, anything that we go over in the meeting, that we do have an email address, and I believe Dave usually puts it up there. So it's sc0202@millisschools.org. So it's S C S for school, C for committee, 0202@millisschools.org. So again, if any of the general public has a question about any topic that we talk about, please email us. We're happy to get back to you. Okay, so Bob just gave it back to you. Yes, Ms. Gibbons.
Can I just add one, one piece to your comment?
Yes.
We'll be getting back to you after the meeting. We won't be addressing any questions during the meeting. So as always, we want your feedback and questions. Happy to answer those. We'll be doing it as a follow-up to the meeting and not answering any questions during tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Denise. Takes a village. Okay, so Bob just gave an update. I just, for some context, I know there's been a lot of questions about cases, sorry, something just popped up on my screen, cases in this, in the district. So I, you know, I asked Bob and the nurses to put together, just so people could understand what the magnitude of COVID has been. So since the beginning of COVID, since, you know, roughly, you know, when did we go back to school, October time? In pre-K to grade two, we've had 11 positive students, two positive staff, and 60 students quarantined as close contacts. Between grades three to five, we've had six positive students, zero positive staff, and 43 students quarantined. We've had one other CFB member test positive that's now associated with a grade. We've also had 19 staff quarantined at Clyde Brown as a result of being close contacts. We don't have the breakdown of the grade level, but just so you get an understanding of the, just the magnitude of what, what we're dealing with as a district. The middle school, the numbers are a bit better. So in between grades six to eight, we've had two positive students, three positive staff, but 54 students quarantined as close contacts and six staff quarantined. And then in the high school, we've had 11 positive students, five positive staff, 82 students quarantined as close contacts, and 14 staff members quarantined as close contacts. So we've had quite a bit of close contacts. I think it's interesting to hear that, you know, where the most positive cases that we've had are, you know, pre-K to, it looks like. And then nine to 12 has, also has 11 positive students. So again, just wanted to give the, the public just an understanding of what we, what we're going through in the district as far as managing these COVID cases. A couple of things that, that we can, that, that everyone can do to help. You know, it's, most of the cases or some of the cases causing most of the quarantines are when parents are sending kids to school pending a test or sending kids to school pending or activities pending a test. Those are the times that we're seeing the most quarantines happen. So please, 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 if your kids, if your kid's pending a test, don't send them to school or activities. You know, be truthful on your attestations. Help us out where we can. The nurses, you know, are having a hard time and are working really hard with the cases that they can't control. Let's not add things that we can control. So is it inconvenient? Yep, sure is. But, you know, a few days of inconvenience versus, you know, knocking out a team or having a whole team have to quarantine. I think it's, you know, it's, you gotta weigh it. So if you're pending a COVID test, please stay home. Anything? Does anyone else have anything about COVID that we want to talk about? Okay, so now we're going to move into an update of in-person or increased in-person learning. So before I'm going to, Bob, before I turn it over to you, I wanted to just give a brief update on, not an update, recap of our last school committee meeting. So we had a committee meeting on 119. Again, I just want to just kind of set the record straight or just, there's a lot of misinformation out there right now. So Bob gave a verbal update on our current COVID cases and where we are in the process of adding in-person learning. Just to point out, the school committee meetings are always posted on YouTube. Go on YouTube, search Millis School Committee will pop up. So the discussion that's of last meeting started at about seven minute 15 second mark, to be exact. So we started talking about the increase of in-person learning. At about the 11 minute mark, we, as a committee, stated that going forward, the increase in-person learning would become a regular topic or a regular agenda item to all of our meetings going forward. So every meeting going forward, like we stated at our last meeting, we will give a public the update on where we are in the process of increasing in-person learning. If you want to fast forward to about the 14 minute 33 second point, Mark brought up the question about, hey, when we, when we did this during last, during the summer, we had a spreadsheet, and it helped the public kind of visualize what we're doing and asked if we could do that going forward. And we agreed. So again, we stated that going forward, we'd bring up the spreadsheet and we would review it with the public. And that discussion about the increase of in-person learning ended at about the 18 minute mark. So you're welcome to go back and, and again, review what we were, what we were saying. Now, that being said, Bob has a brief update, just sort of, you know, and then we will bring up the spreadsheet and we'll go over from there. So Bob, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Yeah, so, you know, the six-foot distancing is a metric that obviously impacts our ability to get kids back into school. But we, the administration and the staff at all three schools have been meeting and planning for the viability of increasing in-person learning where possible. At Clyde Brown School, Tanner and her staff have been making plans on welcoming back students in, fully in grades K through two. As, you know, we believe that these schools, these grades could have full in-person learning while maintaining six-foot distancing. We also believe that students in these grades acquire most foundational skills crucial for future learning that makes their return to in-person learning a priority in the district. So the plans are obviously still tentative, but the tentative plan would be to stagger the transition back in phases, one grade level at a time. As I mentioned, Tanner and her staff have been working on plans towards that. At this time, we haven't made a determination about which grade level would be first, but we believe a staggered approach would enable us to ensure that procedures such as drop-off, pickup, going to lunch, recess, transportation, all those logistics could be safely maintained and tested by doing it in a staggered approach. In order to achieve full person, full in-person learning in these grades, we would have to hire some new qualified staff. We're currently advertising some positions to do that. We would need additional staffing to do that. As grade levels get ready to come back in person, we would survey those families, asking for a commitment to in-person or fully remote. So one of the things we would want to do is get parent input put, but one of the issues we had over the summer was we surveyed parents, and at the time we surveyed them, we didn't have all the information that some parents felt like they needed to make a decision. So, you know, with that in mind, we want to make sure we have a plan in place and can present that to families of a particular grade level when they're coming back. All our schools have been developing criteria to bring back students who have the highest needs to four-day in-person learning. The amount of space that we have available for that in grades three to five, six to eight, nine to 12 varies. The, the amount of space to maintain six-foot distancing creates some logistical problems there. Also, at the midpoint of the year, there were some students who had been fully remote, and we said that was a time that fully remote students could come back to full in-person, and so that has happened. And so that impacts the number of seats we have available for more in-person learning. You know, we certainly understand and agree that it would be best if we could get all our kids in four days a week, five days a week, but we want to make sure that, you know, we're doing it in a safe manner and, you know, keeping the, the spread of COVID-19 at bay as we welcome kids back in. You know, we are looking at if, if there's a possibility to move away from the six-foot distancing. Once a vaccine's in place, a lot of that stuff is obviously up in the air. And we're, we've been working with the Millis Teachers Association as well to look at some of those issues involved with getting kids back full in-person.
Thanks, Bob. What I'm going to do is bring up, I'm going to share my screen and bring up the spreadsheet and kind of walk through some of this in a little more detail. So the public can see. So can you guys just confirm? You can all see my screen? Okay, so some of this stuff that we'll walk through, Bob's already just kind of briefed on, but we'll, we'll go through it again. So, you know, it's broken up by, by category. So the biggest thing is the policy, right? So right now, the policy in the district is six-foot. And not only the policy, it's in our, you know, it's, it's in our contract with the teachers, and this is something that we've been working closely with the teachers on and supporting them on, on this also. So like Bob said, we're, we're in talks with them in the possibility of after vaccinations, if we're comfortable with going to three feet. But, you know, just so everyone knows that we wouldn't, that wouldn't even be a consideration right now for us until after teachers are vaccinated. And then that's something that, you know, we'll go back to the table with, with the, with the teachers on, on. So, you know, six feet.
Madam Chair.
Is what we're at. Yes.
I hate to interrupt, but I think it's important that this is not just a question of whether teachers are vaccinated, but when we have a population, a percentage of everyone in the building, students, faculty, and staff. So it's not dependent just on teachers. It's, we do have to negotiate, but I think that's an important clarification very early on in this conversation.
Yep. No, thanks, Steve. You're, you're right. It's not solely on, on the teachers. It's what's, you know, what everyone is comfortable with in the district of six foot versus three foot. So any plans right now is based off of that six-foot distance. So again, with technology, will there be any technology needs? The answer to that is no. Oh, can we zoom in?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can I just go back to, just to get, just to get some hard clarity on, on where we sit as a district today? So on the six feet, you know, if, if we are not, and, and I don't know if the committee wants to speak to it on, on our own, or, but if we're not moving to six feet, if what I understood Mr. Mulaney to say is, we don't, until there is an opportunity to decrease social distancing to six feet, the only grades that would see overall expansion of in-person learning is grades K through two. Is that correct?
There's a little down-in-building logistics mark. We talk a little bit more about that, but as of right now, yes. So why don't we hold that for just a minute? And we'll, and I, you know, in interest of time, right, it's 6:55. We, we are starting at 7:30 with the other part of the meeting, but I may skip over some of these things that aren't as important, and I apologize. I don't know why my screen keeps jumping like that. So technol, so we'll go through some of these. So technology needs as, just for a brief, it's, the answer to that is everything should be fine. We think we've worked out all technology issues. The, so the, the budget, so the, what's the cost of bringing back students? If someone wants to kind of go over what that is, I don't know, Terry, if that's you guys, but, you know, go ahead.
Well, I would also say that we're still working on the staffing, but the $47,000 figure that's in here, in all likelihood, the vast majority of that is going to be reimbursed by FEMA under the president's executive order. So while it's a cost, it may not be a cost that we will have to ultimately bear. We may have to upfront it and then be reimbursed.
Okay.
Terry.
Yes.
Terry, do we have, do, are we confident that until we are guaranteed the federal money, or we know exactly where it is, that we could absorb it on, you know, running, running the upfront risk?
Yes.
Okay.
The next few questions are about transportation. So Terry, I know you're pretty close to this. Do you want to just give an update on, so we don't have to read, I don't want to have to read through these words for word of where we are with buses.
Yeah, I think, I think the biggest issue is the, the number of buses is probably the key issue. And I think that under the current standards, could we use another big bus to help out with transportation? Yes. Though hopefully, we could, at least in the short term, use one or more of our spares to do that. The question is, will we have a driver for that spare? Right now, we do. So hopefully, we are really able to maintain that. The vans are a little bit more problematic, but we got some, I think, good news, actually, both for the environment and for ourselves. Recently, when we found out that if we were to start replacing vans with either electric or flex-fuel vehicles, that they could be funded by the Green Communities Grant. So Bob Weiss at the town is pursuing that on his end. We're looking for specs on a couple of vans that would fit the definition for green communities. And so we actually may be able to replace two vans. We'd actually hope relatively quickly.
Perfect.
I think the only other thing I'd say really briefly is rooting would be changed if we have all students full in, simply because we'd combine hybrid routes into more conventional routes.
Yeah, and just again, for clarification, when we say all students, all, or we say students all in, we mean four days a week. So it's, it's Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Wednesday is still a hybrid day, even when we, you know, talk about full-time. That's what we talk, that's what we're talking about. So arrival dismissal, I don't know, Bob, if you want to just give an update, or maybe, I don't know if that's the, the principles, just a little bit of, of the impact or the, or lack of, or what the impact would be on arrival dismissal time?
I think with Tanner, would you want to speak to that? I think it most impacts Clyde Brown, particularly if we're looking at K to two coming back full in-person, where we can have the six-foot distancing. And those of you whose students go to Clyde Brown, you see Ms. Jango out there every day. So Tanner, do you want to give us your thoughts on?
Sure.
Drop-off, pickup?
There would be an impact just due to the fact that we have limited space on the buses. So many more parents are dropping students off and picking them up. So we are looking at creating two spaces for drop-off and pickup so that we could get students in as efficiently and quickly, safely as possible. So that's, there would be an impact to that, but we're, we're working to see if we can come up with two locations in this, you know, on the school grounds where students could be dropped off. It's more of an impact at dismissal when we've got more, getting in the building is much easier and more quickly than getting out of the building just because of the lineup of the cars. We have to know exactly what parent is at what car, so we know what child to send out at that point. So the impact on arrival is less significant than the impact on dismissal.
Yeah. Okay, so teaching and learning. The, the question on teaching and learning is how does this affect the, the teachers and just general education? So I think that the answer to it, impact in learning time, pros and cons, right? So the pro is teacher's attention would not be divided by in-person or remote students. Quality instruction increases. The con, arrival time may increase and the time it takes to get everyone's hand washed before lunch. So of course, right? So if we have more, more kids in school, that's a lot more hands to wash, a lot more, yeah, a lot more time lining up. So I, you know, Bob or Tanner, I think you guys are just kind of walking through this and trying to figure out what that exact impact would be for each classroom and how much time you need for those, you know, lunchtime and dismissal time, that type of thing.
Right. And I think, I think, you know, obviously, there'll be more time involved there. I think the trade-off is having the kids in the building. We believe that's a, you know, that's a good trade-off. And, and so though there are cons to it, and it will take longer for, for certain procedures, overall, having the kids or, or most of the kids in the building, I think there'll still be some remote students in those grades, but having most of those kids in the building, they'll benefit from being in the building four days.
Okay, thank you. The next one, I, I think that we'll, you know, spend a little time on. So talking about building logistics and, and how, you know, is it possible to add more students or what's the limitation? So I want to start a little bit with the middle school. So if you can see here, it looks like we're at or near capacity at the moment in the middle school with the six-foot distancing. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I think Maureen could, could handle that one.
Sure. So when we implemented the six-foot distancing guidelines, we went to each classroom, and we put the maximum number of desks that we could in those rooms so that we would know our capacity. And at this time, we have invited some students with high needs to come four days. I think as Tanner explained, we're sort of using a tiered approach and looking at student need, but we're also looking at how many seats we have in the classroom to maintain that distancing and transportation. And right now, definitely at sixth grade and eighth grade, we're just about at capacity in every classroom. Now, you could walk down the hallway at any given day and see some empty seats, and that could be because a student has decided to work remotely that day because they weren't feeling well. We're also mindful of students who are fully remote. We still have 38 students at the current time that are, are working full remote every day. But as Bob mentioned, they could opt to come back. So we want to make sure that we have space if they need to come back into the building. So right now, if we need to maintain that six-foot distancing, which is important for safety, If we need to maintain that six-foot distancing, which is important for safety, we don't really have the space to welcome all students back four days. Um, but we are doing what we can to determine who has, um, you know, the need to be in the building four days based on um service delivery for IEPs and um ELL students. And then we're looking at um some students who are just really having a hard time engaging remotely and participating remotely. But we don't have a lot of space for that, so.
Thank you. Um. So for Clyde Brown, I think we talked about that um already, but so Clyde Brown, you guys are the the priority right now is K through two for four days. Um. And then you will uh work from there on the on the prioritization of of additional students. Um, so I I know you guys had already talked about it, so I don't don't think that you guys have any unless you have anything else to um. Oh, geez, geez.
Um, I would also say that that that's kind of happening simultaneously. Um, you know, K to two, looking at full and then three to five, um, you know, looking to add where where they can. Um, you know, I don't know if Tanner had anything else she wanted to comment on that.
Yes, we we've I we are doing it simultaneously so that we could um know exactly the needs in the building, looking at how we're tiering uh the tiered process of bringing students back in as well as moving um K to two in the building in that staggered model. So um, we're looking at all of that simultaneously, just to make sure that um we're able to maintain that six-foot distancing. We did have some move-ins um that bumped some of our numbers up um so that at one point we could keep more classes in their current space. Now we're looking at moving a few into other more spaces like the Steam Lab Music Room. Um, just because their numbers are a little bit higher now.
Thank you, and I apologize. I just I got kicked out of the spreadsheet, but it looks like I'm back in. Um, and I know we don't have it listed here for the high school, and I'm not sure if Mark is with us still, but oh, yes, he is. Um, how is where are we with the high school with six-foot distance?
Yeah, so I think s- similar in some ways to what Maureen talked about um with, you know, obviously having measured out the classrooms for six feet of distance. And um, we've been in the process over the course of the last couple of weeks here. And after the first of the year, I probably had about ten kids that were fully remote uh that wanted to come back in the building. So um, having the opportunity to offer um, you know, increased learning time for special populations of students. We kind of wanted to wait to see how many kids came back from remote. So uh, we did have ten kids because in total, I think at the high school right now, we have seventy kids that are full remote. Um, so I have to be mindful of the fact that some that population, as we move into the next couple of months here, may may want to come back in the building um for time. So um, trying to be mindful of that, but at the same time, um, we've also gone ahead and identified um, uh, students in special education uh that we thought um were in need of uh because they were in the high need category of coming in for extra days. So we're working with that population of kids right now as the first to identify to come in. I think I just looked through um for the for after February vacation, a list of maybe around eleven kids um that we're taking a look at, gonna probably offer that opportunity to and had to take a look at cohort numbers. You know, it's a little bit different than than the elementary school or the middle school or at the high school. We have so many different classes and electives and kids it from different grades, grade levels that blend into different classes that it's a real puzzle trying to figure out where certain kids fit into certain um co- classes, even though the cohort numbers might be. Um, you know, for instance, if you look at our um, you know, the twelfth grade, uh, the 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 cohort A is, I think, at thirty-five kids and our cohort B in total is at like forty-nine kids. So you would assume on cohort A days, there might be some more space in classes, but that isn't always the case because it depends on what that class is and how kids are enrolled in there in some of the different grades. Um, so what what we've done is uh in addition to looking at some of the special ed population of students for high needs and inviting them back in. And that'll be done in a tiered process over the course of the next couple of months. We're also going to go out and identify students um based on some specific criteria in the general ed population. Um, we've put a group of counselors and teachers together to start the process of coming up with some specific criteria for how we might do that. Um, and we'll try to build a list through staff and counselors of students in the general ed population that we think might we might be able to offer um extra days to. But again, you know, if I were to kind of take a look and show you like across our classes, I can't tell you that, you know, like in ninth grade or tenth grade or eleventh grade in particular that we have space. I just know that in general, in each of our classrooms, you know, the average is probably maybe somewhere between like four to six seats that might be available. Um, and and those could go pretty quickly as we start bringing a few kids in on extra days. You know, and kind of like what Maureen said too, there are days where you'll go by classrooms and it will look a little bit empty. And that's because certain students on certain days have decided that, you know, maybe they're not feeling well, they're staying home and going remote. Um, as opposed to coming in on their in-person days. So, you know, again, like anything else, there's a lot of logistical stuff that goes to it. The the basic point of it is that if we stay at six feet, there'll be a limited amount of kids that we can have come back in. Um, and what we what we can do for a certain group of kids is if, I know, looking at the special ed students that we had coming back. Um, there may be a situation where one classroom I have at capacity at six feet. And if that's the case, then the student that's coming back in for that class might have to go to either a study hall or if they're in special education to the academic skills room to zoom in for that class. But if we're able to offer the opportunity for them to come back, uh, um, and it, you know, and for four of their five classes on an in-person day, they could be there and they could zoom into one. I still think that would be a positive to have them back in the building um as opposed to to learning from home. So again, a lot of logi- logistical stuff, but at six feet, you know, we'll be limited on who we can bring back in. Um, but we will be trying to bring some ex- some students in for extra days.
Thanks, Mark. Um, so I just want to kind of recap what was just said. So, you know, as a district, six feet is where we're at, and that's that's not changing. Um, so Clyde Brown, we we have some room, we don't have room to to welcome all grades back. Uh, but we do have some room that Tana and and Bob are are working on um and working quickly on to um to plan that out. And middle school doesn't look like at this time that we can offer a large number of kids to come back. But again, we're prioritizing and same thing with the high schools. So again, where there's room, we're prioritizing, you know, high needs and and not just IEPs. Um, then it goes to, you know, general ed kids that are just generally having a hard time. So there is some prioritization that's happening with whom is being um invited to come back. Um, one thing that I just want to want to throw out there, and I'm not suggesting at all that high school seniors need to to jump a list. But and I'm not suggesting that all, but so these poor kids, you know, they're closing out their high school career. They've been with us for twelve, thirteen, fourteen years. You know, that there there's certain senior rituals that that they've missed out on all year, right? They've got crappy sports seasons there, so. And I'm sure you guys are already already working on this, but there's any way we can sort of reimagine some of these, you know, traditions for them. Um, I'm sure that they would appreciate that because again, you know, we've had them in our district for, you know, at at the minimum, you know, twelve years plus. Um, and I know last year as a as a parent of a a a senior that graduated last year, the end of the year, the community really came together and that parade was, you know, something they'll never forget. So if we can, you know, start to think of ways to reimagine that for for these kids as we graduate them and let them go on to their their next chapter, I think we should do whatever we can as a community to to support those kids.
And I think if if I if I can just for a second on that, I think if um it's obviously that we're in the planning stages of trying to figure some of those things out now and how we can celebrate those kids as they go through the rest of the school year. So I think since we're on this forum, I know there's people that are out there. One of the things that I had thought about is in, you know, I know we had the parade last year and and we were kind of, you know, um, Bob did a great job on the fly of putting together summer graduation and getting that parade together and all those things. And I think um, you know, not knowing exactly where we will be as we get to May-June, if there are some parents out there um that are interested in contacting me um because they have an interest in maybe coming up with some different ideas of celebration activities and things that we could do along the way. I would welcome um that feedback from them as well. I actually think I might put a parent group together, so if people are interested. Um, I think that would be awesome so that we can come up with some different ideas as we move into May-June to celebrate everybody. Because we have to be creative, but I think we can do some pretty cool things to um make the end of the year special for them.
And I would I would say that last year, the the parents were outstanding and and did so much. And and again, yeah, the community was was fantastic.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move down to some of these other um. Things here, and I know we we don't, it's seven fifteen, but we'll go through. So building logistics, the question, um, are we using all non-classroom space? Um, so the question that the answer is yes, every ounce of space that can be converted to learning space has been. So NCFB, they're using the art room, the music room, the STEM lab. Um, you know, the middle school, high school, you guys are utilizing every square inch that you guys possibly can for learning space. So yes, we have thought of that and we are um, they are using every every inch of the buildings to get people in. Um. So a question about um tents as an outdoor classroom. So this came up last fall, so you know, we thought it's only, you know, we should put it back on there. So can we use tents as out- outdoor classrooms? So so yes, there's a possibility that that on school grounds, when the weather gets warmer, that we may be able to utilize some other outdoor space uh and have people and have students outside. So there are some logistical things to work out there like wifi and and that type of thing, power. Um, but it is on our list and it is something that that the the admin team and and everyone is looking at. Um. Think we kind of talked about this, but do we need to hire more staff to help with remote-only students? And what would the cost be? So Bob, I don't know if you want to talk about that, but the answer is yes.
Yeah, yeah, it is. We're looking at a couple models, actually. I think the ideal would be, you know, if we if we look at uh K to two, the ideal would be um, we hire um, a an additional teacher to teach the grade one and two remote kids. Um. The number of um remote kids isn't large enough where we could take our existing first grade teachers and have one of them just teach the remote kids and spread the others out. That really wouldn't work. But if we could hire a uh one and two remote teacher and kind of teach like a split class. Um, and then the other first and second grade teachers could teach their in-person students. That's the ideal. We've we've advertised it. There's not a lot of bites out there. Um, the next um idea we had was to hire some more paraprofessionals who could trade off with the classroom teacher uh when there's times that um, you know, the the teacher might be working with the group of in-person students and the paraprofessional working with the group of remote students. And then that switches the the um teacher working with the remote student, the paraprofessional working with the in-person students. And then, of course, there's times when all the students, remote and in-person are together. So that would be our second thing, to look to get some paraprofessionals to support the classroom teachers uh in classrooms that have both remote uh and fully in-person. So, you know, we we've we've put a lot of advertisements out there. Um, and, you know, we haven't had a whole lot of luck, but but we're hopeful and we've um we've contacted some of the area colleges that have teaching programs to see if there's any December graduates uh who were exceptional. Um, and so we're, you know, that's that's an important part of this. We will need more staffing. Um, and and we believe and and I think Mr. Wigan can hopefully back me up on this that some of those COVID funds can be used to offset the costs of these types of things.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Catalano.
I I think this is an important point, just like the uh the six-foot kind of establishing that we are at six foot in the district and staying at six foot. Um. It. Bob, I want to make sure that I'm not misquoting you, but it basically, we need that staff or we can't bring in extra people. Or is there an amount of extra students we can bring in if we can't get the staff? Or is it, I I I want to just be clear because this isn't a question of what we want to do. It's more of a question of what we can do. And this was a problem in the in the fall when we were looking at logistics is the hiring of staff. And everyone all around us was, there was no bodies to hire. So I don't know if we're in a better place, but I think it, I think we owe it to the community to be very clear that there's there's a desire to do this, but it's contingent upon us having the appropriate level of staff, regardless of the funding at this point. So I think if you could clarify that, I think that would be helpful.
Uh, yeah, so so um, it it would be one of the, you know, and and Tanner can speak to this as well. And in her work with her staff, as they've discussed bringing um, you know, uh more kids back. It's very difficult to um have those fully in-person and remote cohorts. And we think and the staff thinks that um. If it's fully remote and fully hybrid, that's even hard, fully um in-person, that's even more difficult than hybrid when you have um, you know, larger numbers of remote students on a given day. So um, you know, staffing would be um something that uh would really impact uh bringing kids back full a hundred percent in.
Thanks, Bob.
Um, okay, just we'll go through a couple. So the question, do we need to hire more custodial staff? The answer to that is yes, we're looking at hiring um another part-time custodial um staff member to help with uh more kids needs, more high-touch points that need to be disinfected throughout the day and and more deep cleaning. So yes, that is um something that we're that we're in the process of doing or looking for. Um, do we need to hire more staff to monitor the hallways? Um, looks like the answer to that is no, but Bob or Tanner, do you want to go through that?
We would not need more staff members for the hall monitoring, but we would need more due to the increase in students outside. Um, we would need more monitors outside for recess and lunches just to make sure that students are maintaining that six-foot of distance. Because as you increase the number of little bodies, um, it's hard to get across the field in time to make sure that, you know, people are maintaining their distance, so we would need an increase there.
So Tanner, can that be parents that sign up for that or or what it whether what's the criteria for for those people?
Uh, they would, if our parents absolutely could help us with that, um, we would do some training with them. Um, and welcome the help.
Perfect. Just trying to identify ways that people in the community, if they, you know, if they're looking to to jump in and give us a hand at um, some other ways that they can help us. So anyone out there that would like to wrangle little ones, please call Tanner.
It's it's not a um, it's it's not a a professional full-day situation. It would just be during our lunch and recess hours, so it'd be midday.
Thank you.
I'd also say that um, you know, when when the vaccine is available for staff, we have some staff who are working remotely who could then come back to the building and that would free up some of our learning facilitators, so that could help us out too.
Perfect. Um. So if I go through some of these, um, looks like we're we're in good shape for supplies. Um, Terry, you're you're on top of making sure that we have enough PPE and 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 all that, so it looks like we're good with that. Um. Cleaning, so student and staff responsibility, of course, if we have more kids and and depending on on how we um, if we add plexiglass dividers, um, which is again, is something that we're looking into. So there will be more cleaning responsibilities on the students and staff. Um. Let's see, will this will lunch be impacted? So I would assume some students will have to still eat in the classroom or will have um a lot of kids still eating in the classroom? Yes.
Yes, yeah, and we'd have more, we'd we'd actually need more rooms, classrooms having lunches in it.
So does that mean more lunch monitors too, so teachers can also have their lunch break?
That's where I added the lunch and recess monitors so that we would have the additional people to sure that that happened.
Okay, perfect. Um. So a question about utilizing the cafeteria, I think we just talked about this. We obviously, you know, if there's more kids, there, you know, we can't fit them all in the cafeteria, so we'd have to look at other ways to have lunch. Um, sorry, I'm just kind of trying to go through. Sorry, I'm just kind of trying to go through some of these. The question of will it impact mask breaks? I think that the answer to that was no, the current system seems to be working well and we don't anticipate any major issues with more students with how we conduct mask breaks. So again, so we're back to staffing and, and again, how many substitute has been secured to, to cover teacher absences? So Clyde Brown, is this, I've assumed this is to date, we have five additional subs. High school, it looks like you're having a hard time getting subs. You have two learning facilitators. It's been a big help in covering gaps. So again, I think we've talked about this, but we're really struggling to find the substitute teachers and, and learning facilitators to help augment our, our current staff for kit for more in-person learning. Do we need to hire more long-term substitutes? So it looks like the answer is no. But we need, we're looking for more of the, oh, because we can get Paris. So I don't know. I, I think we've covered this, Bobby. Is there anything else that you wanted to add for this one?
No, I, no. And again, I think, you know, when staff comes back, that will help us free up more learning facilitators, but still, you know, we'd still be looking at, at minimum, getting some paras at that, you know, K to two level to, to help with working with both remote and in-person students.
Thank you. The question about adding more cafeteria staff, but our food services staff, but that's the, the answer to that is no, we should be fine with that.
Can I just, can I just have a quick promo here?
Yes.
Is to remind parents that if you've got a school-aged child, whether they're coming to school or if they're remote and you want to come and pick up a lunch, that lunch is free to you right now through the end of the school year under a waiver with the federal government. So we encourage you to do that. It's hopefully good for your child. We believe, but it's frankly also good for the district. So that's a win-win if there ever was one. So we encourage you to take school lunch.
Thanks, Terry. I know my son loves getting lunch. Okay, so health metrics. So so the question is what health metrics levels drive the transition back to two days of remote if any? So given our experience with hybrid, the most significant factor is transmission in school. We've been able to keep the schools open when the town has been in red because we've not, we haven't seen in-school transmission. What we're, you know, the majority of our cases have been sports related and outside and family related. But again, what does, what does affect the school is the close contacts? And that's where we're seeing the biggest impact of school is when somebody's positive within school. And, you know, we are identifying close contacts and, and that has a big impact. We've been lucky. We've had other, there are other schools, other districts around us that have, have, have been seeing in-school transmission. I'm going to knock on wood because so far we haven't seen that. But we, you know, we just ask everyone to again, please abide by the guidelines and, and do everything we can to, to stop that in-school transmission.
And, and at this point, I, I would like to thank the students for, for following the directions that, you know, the teachers and the staffs at the schools have established for protocols and things. The kids have, have been doing it. They've, you know, really done everything that we asked of them in terms of mask wearing and hygiene, hand washing. And also for the most part, parents have been outstanding in their communication. And particularly with our school nurses who are doing a phenomenal job. So, you know, that has a lot to do, I believe, with, you know, mitigating any transmission in the schools.
Agreed. Thanks, Bob. Okay. So that's the end of our Excel sheet. So again, I just want to reiterate for the public, just like we stated at the last school committee meeting, we will, this topic is a standard agenda item for every meeting going forward, and we will pull up this spreadsheet and, and give any updates to, to any of these situations, any of these points that we have and walk through exactly what the district is working on. If at any time there's any questions from parents or community members, please email us. We're happy to get back to you. So schoolcommittee@milischools.org. Shoot us an email. We'll get back to you. Happy to have conversations with whomever, you know, would like to have a conversation. Be careful where you get your information. So please come to us if you have a question. Again, we're happy to answer them. So I'm going to stop sharing this for now. And then pretty good with time here. We're at seven twenty-nine. I don't know if we could have gotten any closer without going over. So I think at this point we can, you know, the thanks to, to Mark and Tana and Maureen, you guys are welcome to stay. If you would, we're, thank you again for, for just coming in and, and helping with these, with these questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I know on our agenda, Bob, we have a February enrollment and a budget update. I'm going to put that up, put a pause on that.
That's fine. We have two more kids than we did last month in the district.
Okay, thank you. So again, for the budget update, Terry, if we have time at the end, we can, we can circle back to that. If not, we can do that.
That's fine. That wouldn't be particularly large either.
Okay, perfect. So what we're going to move on to is our public forum for the mascot. So it's exactly seven thirty. Perfect. So what I'm going to do first do is just talk a little bit about the, the guidelines for the forum. So again, this is an opportunity for the, for, for us, the district to hear from the various stakeholders on the continuous use of, of the Mohawk name. So this is not a discussion or a debate. This is simply in a forum to express your opinion. So all participants, when they come into the meeting, will be muted with their video defaulted to off until it's their turn to comment. Speakers will be announced two at a time. So the participants will be aware when they're next to speak. So I'll introduce the, the first speaker and I'll let the, the next person know that they're on, they're on deck to go next. All participants will have three minutes to share their comments. In an effort to keep the timing fair and equitable, each speaker will be muted when they reach the three minutes. So Bob Malaney has agreed to be our timekeeper. And when the time expires, he will let you know that it is that expired and he will just automatically be muted. Speakers will be set to full screen view when they deliver their comments. That's more for the people that are in the Zoom to let you know that you're going to be pinned on the YouTube. So you'll be featured so that people on YouTube will see just you and not a grid view of us. So as published, the single topic for a comment during this public forum is the continued use of the Mohawk name to represent the Milis School District's. Comments unrelated to this topic will not be permitted. So just a reminder, this is about the, the use of the Mohawk name. So that being said, are we going to let people in?
Yeah, so I can start admitting people?
Yep. Why don't you go ahead and start admitting people?
Okay.
And hopefully they heard me talk about the rules, although I know Denise had also sent them. So we'll just give everyone a minute. And, and I know that we had given some, just some estimated times. So there'll be people coming in and out throughout this. So again, we're going to have everyone just defaulted to mute and camera off. And then when it's your turn to speak, we will unmute you and invite you to turn your camera on. So the first two people I have up, so the first person up is Amy Cohen and the person on deck that we have is Philip Dimmer. So seven thirty-three. So we'll go ahead and, and invite Ms. Cohen to speak.
Thanks for being first.
Can you hear me?
We can. We can't see you yet, but we can hear you.
Okay. Oh, I see. There's my start my video prompt. Hold on just a minute. Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hi, thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to speak. I'll, I'll keep it quick. I just, I'm, I'm relatively new, new to Milis. I moved a couple of years ago and I have two stepkids in the school systems. And I just, you know, coming in from an outsider, the, having the name Mohawk just was really like weird to me and just, it's a little embarrassing. It's like, you know, I want to wear the swag. I want to cheer on the team at, at the, at the games and the events. And it just feels really uncomfortable. And especially with all that's going on with racial, racial justice, it just seems like a really great opportunity to teach our children about moving forward and reconciling our past and, and moving towards a a more respectful, caring community around this issue. I do get that there's a lot of like warm feelings about it. I share that as well from my childhood, having grown up, I went to a camp that used a lot of Native American symbolism that I remember very fondly. And I do recognize that, but I still think at this point in 2021, it's really where, where we need to go. And then the other piece I do also recognize is the financial component, but I think, you know, the statement can still be made and the name can be changed. And then how it, how things get phased out over time can take time as long as, you know, we're moving in the right direction. So that's just all I wanted to share. So thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. I'm very grateful.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. So next we have Mr. Phil, Philip Dimmer, and then Shannon Graham. Is Philip Dimmer in the meeting? I don't see him.
See him.
Okay, then we'll move on to Shannon Graham and then on deck. And I'm going to apologize, I butcher people's names. So Samantha Hutchinson? Maybe I got that. So Samantha, you're after, after Ms. Graham. So Shannon, I'll invite you to speak.
Nope, can't hear you. We can't hear you yet.
China.
Check your headphones, Shannon.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, hello, everybody. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Shannon Graham. I'm a lifelong resident, Milis High alum, parent of three children, two whom have already graduated and one who will be graduating next year. Mohawk pride is a term that delves into our community, rallying around our teams with honor and spirit of true pride. Milis consists of many small businesses who are supportive of our students' fundraising efforts, our teams and the community as a whole. Small school, big family is a motto that permeates throughout the town as community supports each other. And I'm proud to be a member of that. Pride, pride in our town, our community, in our school system. That's what being a Mohawk represents. The students in Milis are caring, compassionate and inclusive to all. From community projects, service commitments, senior projects, and so much more, our students show the community what their pride looks like on so many levels. You can see the Milis Mohawk super fans at the games, respectfully, respectfully supporting and cheering, let's go Mohawks. I have chaperoned many games and have received word from the other towns how well behaved and respectful our students are. Our students know that they represent our town. They know what being a Milis Mohawk means and the pride that carries with it. Mr. Fallon has proposed adding to the school curriculum to include Mohawk history, is not only representative of our ability to provide our students with more in-depth history, but to also make the connection for the students that the pride they have felt all along as a Mohawk comes from a, comes from a place within history, but also still lives today. Native Americans are not just history. They are not gone. What better way to acknowledge that than to teach our children their ways and what it means to be a Mohawk? Don't erase the past, bring it to the forefront. The school committee understands that there will always be opposition to any decisions that need to be made. But let's take a breath. Let's recognize that eliminating the Mohawk doesn't teach our students. Keeping the Mohawk name and carrying the curriculum to educate our students does. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. So we have Shannon next, and then Brian Craby is on deck. So, oh, sorry, Samantha. So Samantha, I will invite you to speak. And I apologize for not getting your last name right.
It's okay. It's Houston. Um, I'll start. Hello, my name is Samantha Houston, and I've been working with the Retire the Mohawk campaign this past year. On January fifteenth, our campaign was sent a statement from the St. Regis Mohawk Director of Communications. And this statement was already sent to the school committee, but I'd like to take my time to share it with the larger community. St. Regis Mohawk Tribal Council Statement on Native Mascots and Cultural Appropriation. The St. Regis Mohawk Tribe stands in solidarity with countless others that the time has come to end the use of indigenous mascots by professional and amateur sports teams, universities, colleges and schools. We are thankful to those who have made the decision to retire them. We appreciate that many consider this a way of honoring indigenous peoples and our indomitable spirit. We must also acknowledge those for whom the images represent cultural appropriation that in the perpetuation of stereotypes. Perhaps most harmful of all is the implication that indigenous peoples are a thing of the past, that we do not live in a new decade, in a new century, in a new millennium like everyone else. Clearly we do. We take pride in having helped to build this modern world while at the same time maintaining cultural and values that always sustained us. The time has surely come for all of us, regardless of origins, to feel welcome, included and respected. On January twenty-sixth, our campaign received a letter from the Mohawk Council of Gunawage. This is the same council as the late Grand Chief Norton, who was Mr. Fallon's contact. And this is important to note for context because they refer to Mr. Fallon in the letter. This letter has already been sent to the school committee in full, posted on our Facebook and Instagram pages, as well as included in the public minutes of the MCK's council meeting. Due to only having three minutes to share, I will only be reading the part of the letter that gives their statement on the mascot issue. Dear Ms. Coles, as a duly convened council meeting on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, the Mohawk Council of Gunawage reviewed your attached correspondence, which was received by fax on December seventeenth, twenty twenty. As you are part of the local effort in Milis, Massachusetts, aiming to remove the Mohawk mascot at Milis Middle and High School, the Council of Chiefs would like to advise you that although they are in support of the curriculum changes and added features within the community of Milis, Massachusetts, to incorporate Mohawk history and culture, they do not support or condone the use of the name Mohawk as a mascot. This information has been communicated with the contact, a teacher at Milis Middle High School. If you'd like to read the rest of the letter, please see our Facebook page. It is important to listen to native voices during this discussion, and that is why I spent my time today sharing letters from two different Mohawk tribal councils. There are also multiple letters from local tribes tied within the statewide initiative to remove all native mascots in Massachusetts. I highly recommend everyone go and read those letters and really listen to native voices that have been silenced by our government for so long. I hope this helps the school committee in their decision to remove the name as well as the image. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. So we're going to go to Brian Craby and we have James Legos on deck. So Mr. Craby, I will invite you to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you're good.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me tonight. So I'm Brian Craby, alumnus of Milis High School. I was captain of a nineteen ninety-four Super Bowl team. I'm a social studies teacher. I'm a football coach. I'm a Milis resident and I'm a parent of four children in the school system. So our mascot is, is gone. And this, this is about the name Mohawks. Becca Coles, who was a student of mine in world history class seven years ago, I'd like to say she was a great part of my class. She's very positive and I'm very proud of her for standing up for what she believes in. That's what I always want my students to do is to speak for themselves. It was one thing that I read that she wrote though, that I want to talk about tonight. And that was that she cringed at the ignorance of the small town that she grew up in. And I feel the insinuation there is that our curriculum does not include Native American voice or any other voice other than white middle class. And I would like to point out some things I have done to not do that. One, I took her class to the Museum of National Center for Afro-American Artists in Roxbury for a field trip. I have been a lifelong student of Native American history and culture. I had a life-changing experience while studying with a shaman in New Mexico. I have taught Native American history through my introduction to philosophy class and while studying first contact period in US history one. I took my students to Medfield under the direction of Mr. Richard DeSorger, former history teacher at Medfield High School, who was an author on King Philip's War, a book he wrote. We walked around Medfield and up on Dover Road in Milis to see the King Philip trees. I led a cross-curricular project with outdoor pursuits class. We built a Wampanoag-style weetoo near the football practice field as you drive down the driveway to the school. We took a field trip to Plymouth Plantation to learn from the Wampanoag work. We took a field trip to Plymouth Plantation to learn from the Wampanoag workers on how to approach the project. I even traveled to New Hampshire to procure some needed supplies for the project. Therefore, I feel it's inaccurate to say that Millis High School has not taught Native American history. We have. And with the ideas put forth by David, Mr. Fallon, we will do it on a more personal level and we will do it better. I wanted to add that just last week, Mr. Rusty Pendleton, Director of the Violence Intervention for Boston Medical Center, spoke to my law class through Zoom. Rusty is the only man in the city of Boston that is the liaison of the communities of Dorchester, Roxbury, all of Blue Hill Ave, between the gangs and the police. So he shows up at Boston Medical Center whenever there is a violent crime and works to get victims out of any gang-related violence. I go out of my way to have my students see people like this and expand their worldview. So for me, ignorant is not a word that should be applied. I go out of my way.
Craby, your three minutes is up.
Thank you, Mr. Craby. We're going to move on to James Legos and we have Ms. McBride on deck. So James, I'll invite you to speak. We can't hear you.
How about now?
You got it.
Sorry about that. All right. Um, good evening. As a lifelong Millis resident, I thank you for this opportunity to speak in favor of keeping the Mohawk and that which it represents in our schools and our town. Keeping the Mohawk is not the easy thing to do. In fact, it's quite the opposite. Keeping the Mohawk takes dedication, passion, and thick skin, as those who stand for keeping the Mohawk continuously be vilified on social media. Our goal is to educate, not eradicate. In a land that was once theirs, Native Americans have become the smallest minority. Without this and other native-inspired mascots, I fear that they will be eradicated once more. This isn't about history or keeping it because it has always been. In fact, we want change. We want change for the better and change for the future. To do what we've been lacking for decades, we want to learn to truly what it means and teach what it truly means to be Mohawk. Being a Mohawk is about their proud competitive nature and about honoring the triumph of these resilient and majestic people. It does not mean headdresses and war paint. We can correct those wrongs and learn from them and not repeat them. We've been inundated with generalizations, mistruths that the Mohawks are savages and cannibals. Listen, it's our school's responsibility to use imagery and terminology that evokes the great spirit and competition of these great peoples. We need to celebrate Mohawk heritage, culture, and language. We have a promise to enable a cultural exchange through healthy dialogue and education. It's not the job of outside forces to tell us how to feel or in which direction to go. It's on us here in this school, in this town, with current and future students. It's our job and our mission to provide outreach opportunities and life-changing enrichment to connect our community with theirs. Our small school, big family, is growing. Our students are confined to their computer screens daily and castigated for being kids. They've had so much taken from them already. Why take more? Keeping the Mohawk ensures them from racist beliefs and ideals towards natives and people of, other people of color. They feel deeply that the Mohawks are not to be caricatured. Those feelings are projected onto them from the opposing view. Growing up with the Mohawk, we are given the truth. The truth is that native peoples are not a thing of the past, but they are current, ever-present.
Oh, no. He froze. Bob pauses time.
Yes. He had a minute left.
Miss, Mr. Legos, you froze. Hold on. We, we lost you. Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, we can hear you. You can keep, you can go.
Where, where, where did I leave off with you?
So rewind about 10 seconds.
All right. So if they feel that the Mohawks are marginalized, then why are they so inclined to retire it and take it from our past, present, and our future? This is only going to fuel the marginalization. The Native American Guardians Association is an alliance of native and non-native people who share this mission to preserve positive and honorable symbols and imagery, as well as tributes to Native American culture into the American mainstream. At the State House, they argued a proposed bill that bans the use of native mascots in Massachusetts schools by saying this discriminates against natives because it prevents only natives from being represented. That bill will ultimately whitewash native history and marginalize them permanently. After generational struggles and forced assimilation against powers to eradicate all traces of their culture, why are we, or better yet, who are we to attempt these atrocities on them again? As I leave you tonight, I do not ask that you be on the right side of history. Instead, I urge you to be on the right side of our future. Thank you for your time and consideration. Go Mohawks.
We're going to go on to Ms. McBride and then we have Thomas Roach on deck. So is Ms. McBride on?
Madam Chair, she, she had a potential conflict coming from another meeting. So she had given us some advanced warning that she might be a little bit late. So if we could, if we could park her for, for a minute and if she enters the waiting room, if we could let her in and give her an opportunity at a later time, I'd appreciate it. Oh, I can't, I can't, I can't hear you, Carrie. Still no.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, I'm gonna leave.
Oh, there we go.
You're back.
All right. So we'll try this again. We have Thomas Roach up and Kyle Swenson on deck. Do we have Thomas Roach in the meeting? And let me see.
I don't see Thomas. I know Kylie was here earlier.
Oh, Kylie's, I can see Kylie.
Okay, so then we'll move to, we'll, we'll skip Tom Roach and we'll move to Kylie Swenson. And we have Emily Vici on deck. Again, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. So Kyle, Kylie, well, Kylie, hi, we will invite you to speak.
Oh, I gotta.
She needs to unmute. So hi, my name is Kylie. I'm from the class of 2017. So there are a lot of familiar faces on here. So it's nice to see you guys. I'm currently a student at Bridgewater State University. I am an English major with an African-American Studies minor, and a lot of the work I'm doing here is very focused on ethnic literature and indigenous rhetoric. I actually had the privilege of taking a class with a Wampanoag Mashpee Indigenous woman. And in her class, we did read a lot of curriculum that was written by native people, one of which did involve the harmful effects of mascots. And I know we've heard it. The evidence is already there. I don't, I'm not going to pull up statistics or the psychological studies of the proven damage that these mascots have on indigenous youth. But um, I will say to hear an indigenous woman's personal experience on how she feels belittled and minimized by the mascots, it's pretty profound. And it is kind of a little embarrassing. I understand that we are going to be adding more indigenous curriculum to the coursework, but it's kind of insulting to add that curriculum and then exclude the native voices who have been clearly telling everyone that they don't feel respected by mascots. And it's not about erasing history. Indigenous people are still here. The Mohawk Nation lives in New York, not in Millis. But the Wampanoag, the Nipmuck people, they're still in Massachusetts and they are very clearly saying that they feel this mascot is racist and it doesn't matter what a lot of non-native people have to say about it because it's just a little insulting. And to keep this mascot is kind of minimizing their presence and acting like native people are gone. Yeah, I just, I think we can do better. So many other schools across the country, across the state and across this country and national football teams have already made the move to change their mascot. And I really hope that Millis will do the same because I really want to be proud of my school. I love Millis. I'm really grateful to be a graduate from there, but right now I can't feel that pride knowing that we have a racist mascot. So thank you.
Thank you, Kylie. So we're going to move on to Emily and we have Dan Carey on deck. So Emily, I will invite you to speak.
Sorry, I can't seem to get my camera working. Is that okay? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so, sorry, Zoom's not letting me start my camera up. So my name is Emily Vekki. I'm a former Millis student and resident. And to be quite frank, I'm really disappointed in the way that the school committee and administration has handled the debate on retiring the Mohawk name. I think it's reprehensible that the school committee has simply ignored the wishes of the Mohawk tribe and the statements and sentiments that other people have relayed earlier. The Mohawk tribe has repeatedly said that they do not support the use of indigenous people and tribes as mascots. And the fact that the school committee is ignoring these statements is embarrassing and reckless. It's contradictory to say that we can honor the Mohawk tribe by keeping the name because the tribe, along with many other indigenous tribes, have repeatedly asked us not to do so, and they have asked to not be used as mascots by citing how they find it to be disrespectful. Furthermore, deciding to keep the name shows a clear lack of listening skills and empathy from the school committee and administration. The suggestion of creating an elective course also trivializes the history of the Mohawk tribe into optional learning and misses the point that indigenous history is a part of American history that should have always been required curriculum. This curriculum needs to be integrated into the already existing required history courses. As educators, you are supposed to protect students and teach them to do the right thing. I would like to assume that these decisions are typically informed by listening when someone says that they are being hurt or wronged, and you are failing as educators and actively teaching students to do the wrong thing by ignoring the wishes of not only the Mohawk tribe, but many other indigenous tribes. You are actively teaching students that we don't need to listen to people when they say our actions are hurting them. You are ignoring the pain and cries for help from indigenous tribes asking you to do the right thing. You are failing to listen to the pain of these people and tribes in an effort to squash this as quickly as possible. It should greatly concern the entire Millis community that you are not treating other people with respect, and it begs the question of whether or not you treat Millis students like this too. I honestly think that you should all be embarrassed that this debate has gone on for as long as it has without any sign of someone stepping up to do the right thing and get rid of the name. And if you aren't embarrassed now, I can guarantee that you will be in the event that the state of Massachusetts mandates you by law to change the name. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. So we have Dan Carey next and Rebecca Coles on deck. So Dan, I will invite you to speak. Hold on, you're still muted. Try now.
Great, thanks. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to the committee this evening. Good evening. My name's Dan Carey. I'm a graduate of Millis High School, class of 1994. Myself, my two siblings, younger sisters, both went through the school system. My mother still lives in town today. I spend quite a bit of time still in Millis, though I live in neighboring Norwood, Massachusetts. Spent a lot of time in Millis, both visiting family and friends that still reside in the community and teaching the community. I'll be brief. I mean, I think when you listen and you hear the word, the term Mohawk and the Millis Mohawk name, I, I think it evokes one feelings of, of family and friends and camaraderie, both in the small school system and the family that we've become, or those of us that played sports over, over the course of years, the battles that were won and lost and, and the time that we spent working with one another. I think that, that Mohawk name just evokes a, a theme or a vision of unity and family and, and folks that stand up and, and fight for one another and protect one another. You know, for me, again, it evokes home and, and warm feelings. It evokes friendships that I've had for over 40 years and continue to have throughout the community today. So, you know, I, I don't believe the use of the Mohawk name with our, with the school and the community is, it should be viewed in the same light as, say, the Washington Redskins or the mascot that the Cleveland Indians use with Chief Wahoo. I don't think it's as egregious as that. You know, I am aware that we live in a time that we need to be very sensitive. We need to be very cognizant of what we think, what we, what we view and how we respect others. But I think changing the Mohawk name here in Millis is not along those same lines. And I think it's, it's a, it's a name to be proud of. I'm, I'm proud to be a Millis Mohawk. And I think our community rally represents and rallies around that name as a, as a tribal community and ones that, that look out for one another and, and see through, see us all through the hard times and the good times. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. We're going to go to Becca Coles, and then I saw Ms. McBride pop in. So after Becca, we'll go back to Ms. McBride. So Rebecca, I invite you to speak.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you for your time. My name is Rebecca Coles. If there is one thing that unites all the speakers and Google Form respondents, it's that we all care passionately about Millis and its students. The Retire the Mohawk Campaign's mission has always been to create a change that would more accurately represent the sportsmanship, integrity, and respect that we know Millis embodies. Tonight, my colleague has read two Mohawk Council letters, both publicly condemned the use of native mascots in schools and sports. Both these Mohawk nations are located 350 miles away in Upper New York and Canada. The Mohawk Council of Gunawage is the counsel of the former Grand Chief Joe Norton. It is the same council that Mr. Fallon contacted months ago regarding the addition and collaboration of native curriculum in Millis. The Mohawk Council was contacted on, sorry, the Mohawk Council announced on January 18th that they were excited for the native curriculum to be added to Millis. However, they clearly publicize that they do not support the Millis Mohawk mascot. This message is clear and concise. If we as a school respect and honor Mohawk, the Mohawk community, as we have claimed throughout this entire conversation, then we will respect and honor their statements today. Tonight, I'm sure we will hear the voices of many community members, and their stories are important and need not be forgotten. But I challenge the community to see this issue as one that is bigger than Millis. I challenge you to see this as an opportunity to write a better future. This is a national conversation that is over 50 years old. It is a movement rooted in research data and justice. Those who continue to use native mascots face immense pressure from state legislation and native rights organizations. And we are not like those schools. We listen to minority voices. Following the statements provided by the two Mohawk councils, along with the local statements provided by Nipmuck, Massachusetts, and Wampanoag tribes, and the testimonies and research provided by the NCI, it would be unproductive and discourteous for us to seek further exemptions to sustain the Millis Mohawk. Our campaign is excited to fundraise when the Mohawk mascot is retired. Our campaign does not believe this issue needs to take away valuable time from the school committee items. We ask that the committee move to retire the Mohawk and work towards choosing a non-race-based mascot or nickname for the 2021, 2022 school year so that we can all be proud of it. Retiring the Mohawk is not an easy choice. It forces us to confront prejudice and preconceptions. It forces us to have a conversation about race, stereotypes, and representation. It forces us out of our comfort and into the unknown. But it is the most important and representative change that we as a community can make. We must listen to native voices and we must prioritize protecting native students. It is time to retire the Mohawk. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. So we are going to move to Bonnie McBride, and we have Jaden Adams on deck. So Bonnie, I will invite you to speak.
Sorry, there we've got the video going. So hello, everyone. My name is Bonnie McBride. I'm an alumna of the class of 2002, daughter of a former school community member who served with a couple of the current members. So I'm here to speak in favor of changing the mascot. It is very clear from the data, the numerous studies, and from the Mohawk tribe themselves, that Native Americans as mascots are harmful. You don't need me to go into detail when I know that information has been shared with you, though, as I am a teacher librarian, I'm happy to cite my sources. Instead, I'm here to share my experience with the mascot since leaving Millis. I'm a teacher at Fenway High School in the Mission Hill neighborhood of Boston. I became an educator because I was inspired by the many wonderful teachers I had growing up in Millis. In 2015, the Fenway Girls Basketball Team ended up in the playoffs against the Millis Girls Basketball Team. I was so excited that my hometown and my current school were matched up, and I was proudly sharing with my students that Millis was my hometown. I quickly stopped sharing my most pride with my students, though, when they began asking me, why was the Millis mascot a Mohawk? They recognized that it was wrong. And as a teacher, I'm supposed to have the answers, but I could not answer why my hometown has still not moved away from using a racist mascot. My students were able to recognize that we shouldn't use Native Americans as mascots because learning about Native Americans is a part of our curriculum. Our students study Native American history, and they also examine the issues facing Native Americans today, such as dealing with racist mascots. We had, we even had a visit to the Pine Ridge Reservation planned for last spring, but it got canceled because of COVID. I'm sharing this to show you that Mr. Fallon's great idea of changing the curriculum can and should happen. Yet there is no need to cling to a mascot to make curriculum changes. The easy thing for you, the school committee, would be to do nothing. We know there is legislation that if passes would outlaw native mascots. Do we really want to be? Do we really want to be a town that sits back and does nothing? Or do you choose to be upstanders and make the hard decision to change the mascot? Fenway High's motto is "Work hard, be yourself, do the right thing." I'm asking all of you to do the right thing and change the mascot. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. We're going to move on to Jaden Adams, and then Zoe Cabral is on deck. We have Jaden on? Oh, yes. Jaden, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jaden, and I'm a junior in attendance at Millis High School. I'm also a member of our school's Club Common Ground. Common Ground is a gay straight alliance for Millis High School. It began as a diversity club in 94 as a response to the Safe Schools Act. As a group that concerns itself with both the trials and tribulations of discrimination and oppression, I have come here today to express our support in the permanent retirement of our outdated mascot. The 2020-21 school year has been marked by both unprecedented times and great challenges for students, parents, and teachers alike. Out of these challenges has also come comprehensive growth. The conversation regarding the permanent retirement of the school's mascot has been one long in the making. Our school committee has agreed to important acts of progress, such as removing all imagery associated with the unflattering and borderline racist depictions of the Mohawk. Mr. Fallon, who has both researched and worked tirelessly, presented us with a curriculum that strives to meet Millis Public Schools standards, providing the student body with the Mohawk Tribe's rich history. These acts are most certainly not in vain. However, they are simply not enough. Millis takes pride in its student body and community it has created. But in a student body with no students of Native American ancestry, why do we then have a Mohawk as our mascot? Furthermore, putting aside our student bodies' races, ethnicities, or genders, using a group of people as a mascot is still one of the most base forms of cultural appropriation. Cultural appropriation being defined as the inappropriate adoption of customs, practices, ideas of one people or society by members of another and typically more dominant people or society. Using the Mohawk people's culture to represent a student body, a sports team, or a school district is inherently wrong. In the past 10 years or so, we have seen a shift in the local, state, and national narrative. Sports teams everywhere are beginning to reflect on what using Native American names and imagery truly means in the face of modern-day America in its relation to the past. Reducing Native Americans and their culture and their history to a mascot is wrong. This isn't an honorable act. No matter how much we educate or apologize, this was and still is wrong. Both students, teachers, and Millis locals are perhaps beginning to realize that. A strong argument of the opposition provided in Mr. Fallon's curriculum video is that two-fifths of the existing Mohawk tribes gave our, the school, the go-ahead for collaboration. That is, two tribe leaders out of the five who said this was acceptable. Two unfortunately do not speak for the collective whole. Recent correspondence has also shown that the Mohawk Council of the Kanawaki Tribe, the same tribe Mr. Fallon spoke to, quote, "does not support the use of the name 'Mohawk' for sports team mascots," end quote, despite their support of curriculum changes. Along with the Kanawaki, the St. Regis Mohawk Tribe stands in solidarity with countless others that it has come time to end the use of Indigenous mascots by professional and amateur sports teams, universities, colleges, and schools. The statement even goes as far to say that "we must acknowledge those for whom the image represents cultural appropriation and the perpetuation of stereotypes." This ultimately isn't about how the Millis community feels about the changing of the mascot, as it is not our decision to make. It is high time that we take accountability, as Mr. Fallon's plans suggest, but also accept and take into consideration Native peoples, more specifically the Mohawk Tribe's feelings on this issue. With this knowledge accessible to all of us, that is why I've come here today, to urge Millis schools and community to stand on the right side of history. That is why Common Ground will stand in solidarity with the decision to retire the Mohawk, as we urge you to do the same.
Thank you, Jaden. I'm going to move to Zoe Cabral, and then we have Eva Fabian up next. So Zoe, I will invite you to speak.
I'm having difficulties with my camera, so sorry about that. As a student at Millis High School, I've had many discussions with people on the topic of changing the Mohawk. Fellow students, teachers, or other people with thoughts and opinions on the matter, both for and against. I believe in changing the Mohawk, so the arguments against my views have been most interesting to me. Analyzing how others interpret data can instruct their thoughts from what they perceive has been enlightening to me and understanding where these people are coming from. However, through my own reflection on these conversations, I believe that a large part of their cause is supposedly for the Mohawk Tribe is actually an act of self-interest. Many of the supporters of keeping the symbol in the name have some deeper attachment to it besides just living in Millis or being in the school system. The type of person that both seems to be the majority in this group and the most aggressive in their beliefs are people who have relations to the sports teams in Millis. Many times, I've seen the phrase "Mohawk pride" touted online by my peers, who all have almost invariably participated in some form of Millis athletics. My point in bringing up specific groups is not to punish the people who are against my beliefs, but rather to draw the connection that supporters of keeping the Mohawk often have an emotional connection to it. Of course, we are human beings. No one is truly free of bias, and our experiences lead us to our thoughts and opinions. And that is also not to say that pride for a school or anything of the sort is evil. Caring about things is what makes us so unique. However, this deep affection for the name has turned into something most ignoble. Studies have shown that symbolism such as the Mohawk is harmful to Indigenous people. Several other schools and organizations have removed Indigenous mascots. The Mohawks themselves have expressed distaste for the usage of their imagery and name. No part of this is honoring them. Not removing the Mohawk from our schools would be a further detriment to the well-being of Native Americans, all just to satisfy our frivolous desires. To keep the name and the symbol is not more but an egocentric act with, at the core of itself, only has self-serving values. Thank you.
Thank you, Zoe. We're going to move on to Eva, and Grace Stewart is on deck. So Eva, I will invite you to speak.
Hi. So I'm Eva Fabian. I'm a sophomore at Millis High School. I've spoken at a school committee meeting before, about two months ago, I think it was. I've always lived in Millis, and I want to share my opinions. I have a letter here that is signed by 22 students in Millis High School and middle school. I won't read all of it, but it is basically addressed to the school committee saying that we are speaking on behalf of the Millis youth in Millis High School. We are all students here, and we support the change of the Millis mascot. For as long as we have lived in Millis, we've had to deal with the heartbreak and guilt of having a disrespectful mascot along with disrespectful imagery and portrayal of the people who belong to the Mohawk Tribe. We must stop claiming the name "Mohawk" as our own. For as long as I can remember, we've known teachers that we, oh, sorry, we've trusted for years, and we appropriate and mock the Mohawk culture. It is, changing the name is not and never will be an easy way out. Furthermore, let it be known that the environment created by this discussion is very hostile. Some of us are afraid to come forth and say our names, for we fear what our peers will say. We've been verbally attacked for standing up for what we believe in. We are sick and tired of being silenced while our friends and peers are rewarded for their beliefs. We don't want to hide behind this veil of compliance while others hide behind theirs of ignorance. We ask you to take us into consideration when you make the decision on what to do about the mascot. I have 22 signatures here, all ranging from eighth grade to seniors now. And half of them prefer not to say their names for fear of discrimination or other peers and what they might say. Many of us feel silenced because we can't express ourselves. Furthermore, I am just as much a student here as anyone else speaking, and in some cases more, because I am currently a student. Like I said, I'm a sophomore here. I've gone here my entire life, and this is my belief as a student and youth of Millis. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva. So we're going to go on to Grace Stewart, and Abby Miller is on deck. So Grace, I will invite you to speak. You're still on mute.
Okay.
There you go.
Hi, my name is Grace Stewart, and I'm a senior at Millis High School. At the beginning of each year, each senior is asked to take lead on a project to make a difference in their community. And what better way to make a difference in our school community than to learn and teach about our mascot, the Mohawks? This year, for my senior project, my goal with the help of Mr. Fallon is to help educate our community about the Mohawk Tribe. I feel that our biggest downfall as a community is that Mohawk history is not built into our curriculum. And I believe that with my project, I can provide enough information, activities, and opportunities that will truly build the Mohawk curriculum into our schools and greater community. I am excited to further our relationship with the Mohawk Tribe, and I am truly honored that I can be a part of this amazing, amazing project and change in our community. I believe that as a leader in this school, it is my job to make a difference in our school community, and I want our students to take pride in representing such an amazing tribe. With this project, I hope to create a school-wide appreciation, acceptance, and passion for being a Mohawk. At this time, I also wanted to mention that we are having our Mohawk Council meetings every Wednesday, and the students are learning so much about the Mohawk community. You can see growth between each week, and it's just such an awesome thing to witness. As a group, we have created a long list of many goals that we are excited to start working on. We have a lot of projects going on at this time, as well as many more long-term projects. In fact, next week, we are hosting a speaker from the Akwasani Reserve, and we are really excited about that. We, as a council, look forward to educating ourselves and others about the Mohawk community, as well as making a change in our town. And if given the opportunity, I know that we, as a community, would take advantage to properly represent this amazing tribe. Thank you.
Thanks, Grace. So we're going to move on to Abby Miller, and then we have Mitchell White on deck. So Abby Miller, I will invite you to speak.
Hi, everyone. My name is Abby Miller, and I'm a senior at Millis High School. Co-captain Erin Rice and I made a short video on behalf of our entire basketball team as a whole and why we are all in favor of keeping the Mohawks. So Mrs. Roach is going to play that.
My name is Abby Miller, and I'm a senior captain of the girls' soccer and basketball teams, and I also run track.
My name is Erin Rice, and I'm a senior captain of the girls' basketball and softball teams. We wanted to speak on behalf of our teammates to let you know what being a Mohawk means to us.
We have always represented the Mohawk name with pride and respect. We wear the name as a form of unity, not only as a team, but as peers, friends, family, and soon-to-be alumni. For us, it represents strength in sportsmanship.
We are proud to wear the Mohawk name.
Mohawks forever!
Thank you, Abby. So we're going to move on to Mitchell White and Dave Fallon. You're on deck. So Mitchell, I will invite you to speak.
Hi, my name's Mitchell White. I'm currently a senior at Millis High School, and I'm involved in track, cross-country, and football. And what I'm going to say is, a lot of the points that have already been brought up, especially by Ms. Cole and Ms. Hughes, what I want to ask is, what do we mean when we say the term "Mohawk pride"? What we're talking about really with this is the pride that we have for our teams, our athletes, our coaches, and really our community, not pride we have for the Mohawk people. And we should definitely have that pride in ourselves and our community, because we can do incredible things, especially as a small school. And we should also have a symbol for that pride. And right now, the symbol we have is the Mohawk. But there's a problem with that. And it's not a problem because we personally think it's politically incorrect. It's a problem because the government of the Mohawk people have politely asked us to stop using the Mohawk as a mascot. If we simply ignore this, we really can't claim to honor the Mohawk. So Mr. Fallon proposes Mohawk education, so to educate about the history and the culture of the Mohawk people at Millis. And I fully agree with this, and I want to thank Mr. Fallon for putting in the time and effort to do all the research about this. But a place where Mr. Fallon and I disagree is that Mr. Fallon believes that in order to educate and continue on the tradition of, sorry, in order to educate about the mascot, that we must, about, sorry, in order to educate about the Mohawk people, that we must keep our mascot. And I personally don't think that this is the case. We can do both. We can both remove the mascot and educate the students of Millis High School about Mohawk history and culture. Changing the name of our sports teams to fit the wishes of the Mohawk people doesn't mean abandoning our pride as a school or abandoning education into Mohawk and Native American culture and history. This isn't an attack on Native Americans or Millis students. Retiring the Mohawk means listening to the Mohawk people, and listening to the Mohawk people means respecting and honoring the Mohawk and Native Americans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitchell. We're going to go to Dave Fallon and Carol Haggerty. You're on deck. So Dave, I'll invite you to speak.
Awesome. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Great to see so many former and present students. My name is Dave Fallon. I'm a social studies teacher here at Millis. And a few months ago, I presented my curriculum ideas to the school committee. And if anyone's interested, that was a meeting we did in December, and I really articulated kind of how that curriculum would unfold. I won't repeat those ideas tonight because I am on the clock like everyone else. But I can probably say we've made a lot of progress on that front. And I have, and I'll continue to provide updates to you all. Becca Coles, who's representing the Retire the Mohawk group, is correct. The Kanawaki Reserve, which was one of the two reserves that I initially received support from, did announce last week that they would no longer support the use of the mascot. What Rebecca did not share, though, is what she stated in her letter to elicit this sudden change of heart. The Kanawaki Reserve shared with me that she stated that we have never taught Native curriculum, and we've allowed headdresses and other imagery. A lot of these statements, as I'm sure you imagine, are blatantly false. So it's no wonder that the Kanawaki Reserve changed their position. I spent several months this summer creating a relationship with the late Grand Chief Joseph Norton, who was from the Kanawaki Reserve. And my conversations with him were powerful and genuine. He gave me his full support and even offered resources to our community. He believed in my ideas, that we could be a model school for others, do this the right way, as he said. Now I'm left trying to rebuild that trust and commitment back. I'm happy to say that I have reached out to current chief parent, where she's reevaluating the council's decision following my discussion with her. Unfortunately, to me, this has kind of been the theme in recent months. This process sometimes, to me, has been more about winning to the other side, and certainly not Indigenous people, not necessarily about our students. Becca stated that this town's ignorance made her cringe, that this forum might be a bad idea tonight because people were bound to say ignorant and racist remarks. I'm not sure what town she remembers, but that's not the town I've taught in for the last 20 years. And I'm sure it's not the town that this school committee has also been a part of. Millis is a hard-working town. It's well-educated. People are respectful. I would also argue progressive and open. My proposal was exactly that. It was new. It was a risk, and I understand that. But I ask that you allow me to continue to work on the project that I promised to my students, and more importantly, to the Kanawaki Reserve and the Akwasani Reserve. I just want you to give it a chance, because I know that both of those reserves told me they would. So I would appreciate that same honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fallon. We're going to move on to Carol Haggerty, and then we have Mary Ann Zimba on deck. So Carol, I will invite you to speak.
Hi, everyone. So many, you know, compelling arguments and discussion, and I just, in starting my video, please forgive you a minute. I lost my, I lost my statement. So no, no excuse, but I will need just a second. So, Mr. Mulaney, take a minute, starting my clock, please.
Carol, do you want us to move on to Mary Ann and come back?
I have it right here.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry about that. So, all right, here I go. I am a, I'm the high school art teacher. I am the parent of four Millis High School graduates, and I want to thank you, like everyone else did, for allowing me to voice my support of retiring the Millis School mascot, the Mohawk. We've heard so many compelling statements tonight, and I'm just offering my perspective as an arts educator. Teaching about diverse cultures has always been a foundational part of arts education. When students make artistic connections between themselves and others, you know, a true appreciation is formed. Partnering with the Mohawk people, if they were willing, would be welcome way to foster that connection, and I think that's something that we all agree on. But through this heightened anti-racist period, I'm striving to include more underrepresented groups in my study of artists. Among many we will consider is Richard Glazer-Denay, a contemporary artist whose artwork celebrates his Mohawk ironwork ancestry, and a Mohawk photographer, Shelley Nero, whose work kind of explodes myths about Native people by focusing on individual family members as well of herself. Through this same lens, though, it seems inconceivable to me that we would continue to use Mohawk as mascot, especially in consideration of the communication from the chiefs stating that they do not support the continuance of the name. I'm sorry for my part in the past of perpetuating the use of the dream catcher as a less offensive image than the Indian caricature, which we still see in the gym. And I'm so pleased with your decision to remove all that imagery. I want to thank you for your careful consideration of this important topic and change. It's overdue and particularly timely. I look forward to seeing the actions of- I look forward to seeing the actions of the school committee moving us towards a more inclusive Milis. And thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Carol. We're going to move on to Mary Ann. So Mary Ann, I will invite you to speak.
Oh, thank you. Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Zamba and I am in my 15th year teaching social studies here at Milis High School. I was incredibly hopeful last spring as more Americans began talking about racial justice. In the campaign to retire the mascot, we surfaced Karen Milis. Our school's achievements and pride are not driven by a mascot. And for many of us, the time to retire the mascot was years ago. I respect and appreciate the efforts to right our wrongs with the proposal of adding Mohawk history to our curriculum. But we, as a district, we, as a society, owe it to all indigenous people whose names have been screened onto our school uniforms, whose tribal apparel has been appropriated, and whose cultural traditions have been exploited. This conversation, however, is bigger than us, bigger than the Mohawk Nation. This is a national movement that prompts all of us to self-reflect and self-check our own implicit bias and white privilege. Now more than ever, it is our responsibility as educators to teach, to protect, and to guide our students in fostering cultural empathy and awareness. 50 years of petitions opposing the use of Native American mascots and the extensive list of professional organizations, such as the American Psychological Association citing the detrimental effects it has on Native American children, is more than enough reason to retire the Mohawk name. We can retire the Mohawk and enhance our curriculum. Removing Native American imagery is a huge step forward, yet not enough. Keeping the Mohawk or any racial, ethnic, or tribal mass group as a mascot exemplifies the very systemic racism we are trying to overcome as a society. The district recently had diversity and anti-bias training, which reaffirmed the fact that Native American mascots perpetuate negative stereotypes, promote ethnocentrism, and dehumanize a group already marginalized. Two Mohawk councils have publicly stated their opposition to using the name, yet we're still here seeking an exception from the National Congress of American Indians. This is just another example of a minority culture conforming to the needs of the dominant culture and is exactly the cultural appropriation and white privilege we, as educators and elected community leaders, need to condemn. Keeping a Native American tribe as our mascot is wrong and no amount of added curriculum will make it right or excusable. The time is now. Let's not be the exception, rather let's set the example. Retire the Mohawk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. I'm just going to circle back. Denise, did we have the, I know we had two Ms. McBrides. Do we have the other one join?
I don't believe I saw, I don't believe I saw the other, the other speaker McBride join. And I think Mr. Mulaney has confirmed that.
Okay.
Is that true, Bob?
Right, yeah.
And I think, and I think the only other one was Mr. Roach. Ms. Roach. That was the only other individual that, and I don't believe that they've joined either.
Or Mr. Diver also. So we have another, so confirm that he is not on either.
Right, right.
Okay. Then that concludes our speakers for the forum. So I just want to thank everyone from the community that came out, especially the students. That's not easy and they all did a great job. So thank you and thanks to everyone in the community for coming out and giving us your opinion on this matter. Okay. So, go back to our agenda. Terry saying that it's only eight, not only, but that's 8:28. Do you want to give a brief budget update?
Well, I would just say that I finished the detailed budget. It's in balance with the, with a red, white, and blue sheet, but not the one you've seen. So I'll put it that way. So the administrative team's going to meet tomorrow. We're going to discuss budget. And at your next meeting, we'll, we'll probably have an update for you as to where we stand.
Okay. Thank you. And the only other thing I think we have on our agenda is we have an executive session. Looks like we have an executive session. So at this time, I guess I will take a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
I'd make a motion that we adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session for the purpose of contract negotiations for union and non-union personnel.
Again, moved in second. Any further discussion? This requires a roll call vote. Robin?
Yes.
Steve Catalano?
Yeah, yes.
Mark Conroy?
Yes.
Denise Gibbons?
Yes.
And I'm the yes. So we are adjourned to executive session.
I didn't see a packet for executive session. Was there?
Oh, I don't know. I just saw it.